Thank you all for being here. At this time, we'll call to order the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners's informal work session for November 6, 2018, 1:30. Work session, we have non-department updates. We have Mr. John Phelan, Public Works Director here, give us an idea of what's going on. How do you feel, number one?
Oh, good. Friday, I go in and they're gonna close this up and...
No need to. Come on, you can take it. Come on, Laura.
Three or four days if I do have an infection. There's still a risk that I might have to take my arm off.
No. Are you serious? After all that? Are you serious?
Yeah, I do have infection in the bone. So, if they close it up and everything goes fine, I'm back on, ready to go. And I kinda think that time-wise, by the end of the month, I should be able to work a full day.
Wow, good.
So, no, and my surgeon is very optimistic that they're not gonna have to do that. But, you know, he's gotta forewarn me that that could happen. So, I told him that if you could put a prosthetic on there that has a fishing pole on it.
That's right, right.
First of all, I'd like to, and I know there's some, Laura's told me that my time is short here, so I'm not on her...
I was gonna say, what's a hell of a thing to say, John? Thank God, Roger, Laura.
You were supposed to kinda ease into it.
First of all, I wanted to bring up the building, the end of the new Public Works
facility out there. And it's, we're still, we're really expecting, or expecting to be in there sometime in December. The Commissioner went through it, and I'll let you just comment on it if you don't mind.
Yeah, I went out and did a tour today, and it's, John's got the Taj Mahal of Yamhill County, but no, it really, they've done a beautiful job. What's really neat, and I don't wanna steal John's thunder, but having all of our, all the elements of Public Works together in one building, the efficiencies that we're gonna realize from that are just tremendous. And the way that Russ will be able to, from his office, oversee the entire operation is, I'm just, I'm very excited about it, and they've done a great job out there. And we do have space for growth, which Yamhill County is a growing county. So, I think this facility is gonna provide us adequate space for many, many years to come. And I'm glad we went ahead and did the things we did in there. I think it will prove to be very valuable to the county.
Not to mention that emergency management's now gonna have some much-needed space as a result.
And they can see out the windows.
And they can see out the windows, yeah, so...
Just don't hide them in your building. They'll want to think you're...
The idea has, as Commissioner said, and I think that's one thing that is, I'm really happy for it. This is the first time in 35 years that the Public Works has been together in one, exiled, in one facility. And I do think there's some synergies that everyone's gonna happen there. They'll be able to just get up, do a little walkout, and talk to the people. And maybe it sounds, well, you should be able to do that, walking across the yard, and it's raining, you kinda, now, get it next time, and so on and so forth. So, I'm very excited about it. I think we've given it a lot of thought. You guys have seen all the big plans and whatnot. I think it's gonna be a very functional building. And we're still, December, I think it looks like we're gonna be there. You know, with all the workloads that are going on right now, getting the crafts in there to do it has posed some problems, but I don't think there's a lot of urgency. Let's do it, and do it right, and I'm excited about it. The other one I wanted to address was Laughlin Bridge. I know that the Commissioners have probably heard several people, and complaints about that or whatnot. I'll just give you a little history of it. Seven years ago, and you gotta remember, I have 135 bridges. Seven years ago, there was an issue structurally with it. We went in and started the process of doing a bid for an RFP for a construction, engineering firm. We succeeded in that. Took us about two years to buy the right-of-way. There is a set of plans on it. You know, if we had not done that, we would be doing that right now.
But their repair was done at the time, seven years ago?
Yes, yes, yes. So, seven years ago, we went in there with the crew and did a repair. Structurally, the bridge was fine. So, what happened is, is that the state had given us some bridge, some beams, and we had realigned the bridge just a little bit to make it so it wasn't so critical of a corner there. It was going to be on our budget this year. It's, you know, it's one of those things that, and I know everybody's pulling their hair out, out there, but structurally, the bridge is not failing. What's failing on the bridge is the head wall. The head wall is what holds the embankment up. If it was to let go, it's not gonna be a total failure. What you'll have is, you'll see a little indentation there, but the bridge itself, structurally, still, from the repairs that we made six, seven years ago, is still in fine condition. What we wanna do right now is, is that I talked to Christian, we wanna try to fast-track this, no different than what you and I did on Palmer Creek. What we're hoping for is to get a contract out to WA specific. The plans have already been drawn to the bridge. Right-of-way has already been secured, and the beams are still ours. So, what we'll do is, hopefully, we should be able to do this in one season. If we had done it seven years ago, we'd have been two seasons guaranteed, if not three seasons by the time we'd done that.
John, can you back up a bit?
You bet.
You did the, you've recently repaired the bridge also.
Correct. Amanda's supposed to be out there this week. Again, what we did is did some temporary repairs that were predicted, actually, for the last one to three years. So, there is a life expectancy on that bridge, even if we just did minimal repairs to it. But I'd like to go forward and start the process of replacing the bridge now. Right now, this week, we should be able to, and I'm fairly confident right now that they will up to the low limit. Right now, we have it at five ton. That was just a precautionary thing, is that until the bridge was fixed, we wanted to do a five-ton, just to keep the trucks off. Right now, where we're at is, is that we fully expect them to raise that to 20 ton, and we'll go forth on the bid. You know, first of all, I talked to Christian. Hopefully, we can use WA specific, because they've already, they should have a huge advantage. They already have plans for it. And so, I would suspect that all June, we're gonna have to close that road, and it'll be closed for five to six months while the new bridge is being constructed. You know, I've had individuals ask me, why don't you build the bridge next to it and keep that, keep it open? That doubles the cost of our bridge, and as you all know, budget is very important to us. There is a detour route that isn't that extreme. It will cause some hardships on some people out there, but I mean, that is what it is. Out of the 135 bridges, over the next 50 years, just about 80% of them will have to undergo the same thing, and I'll give you an example. Deer Creek Bridge, I don't know if you know where that is. Deer Creek Park, obviously, needs to be replaced. We've taken it to the Bridge Committee. I expect here, probably by the time I go through the Bridge Committee, RFP, Construction and Design, I'm four to five years out to replace it. If something happens in the interim, we'll either repair it or have an emergency situation. Now, Laughlin Bridge is not going to fail. I'll guarantee you that. What's gonna happen if the repairs were not done is the head wall is gonna move, and you're gonna see a big bump in the bridge. So, that's where we're at with that. Is there any questions?
I got, John, when we close that down for what, next season? If we go in, does it close it down next season? The only thing I heard, 'cause I don't know what the detour was, was for fire and life safety. How much of the detour is that for, like Yamhill Rural, or the ambulance with that road closed down to get up to where, not where the heights are?
You know, I'm gonna say two to three miles.
So, it's not anything we're...
No. You know, in the interim, Commissioner, you've gotta realize, we've done the Green Bridge, which, you know, frankly, is more critical as far as our transportation. We've done De Young, which again, that's a huge bridge that fire and life really does have a problem out there. And we've done Palmer Creek in the interim. And those bridges probably moved up the ladder, if you would, because of the, how critical it is for either the ag community, or, as you said, fire and water.
I think if we have an opportunity to fast-track that, do it all in one season, actually, we should just, I mean, go ahead, maybe just go ahead and do it.
It was gonna be shut down at some point. It could've been shut down two years ago, but it...
But the out would've been long.
Yes, we would've had, by the time, it took us two...
It'd be closed.
Yep, and it took us two years to buy it.
So, if we can get closure, we'll have closure for six months, or six minutes of...
And it's been, about a month now since they've lowered the weight on it. So, the impact has already been felt, and we know, the fire chief said possibly a 20-minute delay getting two families on that road, and that would account for...
Yeah, well, that's why I asked John, you know, was it 20 minutes, or was it half an hour?
Don't quote me on the two to three miles. I was putting five, I guess, from...
Again, that was his estimation, Brian. The fire chief indicated that he thought about 20 minutes, 30 minutes.
Yeah, fire wasn't, my main concern was the...
Well, absence of service, and the number of homes out there, which, though it's not a major residential area, there still are families out there that need those services.
Oh, we gotta do it, we gotta do it.
Yeah, and you can only do it as fast as you can, and I think that the closing thing, getting out there, getting it done as quickly but as efficiently as possible, it makes more sense trying to drag this thing out and do it piecemeal and have a disrupted transportation system for the next two years, and it would still have limited tonnage. So, I think let's get it done and do it right.
No, and I agree with you, Commissioner, this is that, you know, this gives them a chance. It's gonna be short, no different than what we did in Palmer. We could've dragged that out for a five-year closure, or a six-year closure, but we fast-tracked it in...
In less than, well, little over three.
Yeah, well, and the contract was left within years, you know?
Yeah, as long as we sign the detour, good, especially that time if we do it in the center where there's a lot of tourism, as long as we sign the detour route where people, especially that aren't from the northern part of the county, know how to get around from one side to the other.
Let's get an issue with it.
Yeah, and see, originally, what we had planned is that my crew is doing some of the work, the decision was made, now, let's just do it.
Do it.
Have the contractor address the approaches, pavement, and so on and so forth. So, you know, the bridge right now, with the decks that we got for free, are 60 feet long, and it should make a 28-foot. The road curve, it's a fairly dangerous curve, the way it's aligned, and we should be able to take some of that out, so it will be, you know, some of the problems was, is what type of pillars we're gonna put into it, so... No, I think it's time to do it. You know, we have several bridges that are on our schedule to do. They might move back a little, or the urgency might make them move forward a little, depending on what happens.
135 bridges, that kind of stuff, and you just gotta do them when you gotta do them, you know? It's like this, so...
Okay, is there no more questions on that?
Is there anything else?
No.
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm not done yet. Can I have another?
I'll give a couple more names.
You can do whatever you have to do.
All right. De Young Bridge, we made the schedule on that. We will anticipate opening that bridge in February of 2019, so that's been, again, a good fast-track deal. We could've been two, three seasons on that one. Palmer Creek, we're doing the Asfields. It is open, so we'll have traffic on it. I mean, it has traffic, if you're honest. We're just finishing up Asfields.
Sam's very happy with us.
Good, good.
I'm not from Sam.
A lot of people are, and, well, I would say, if we just had cut down those two deer creeks, we'd be really strong. Anyway, but a lot of visits to the Bridge Committee over there, they, you know, they know who Yamhill County is.
And Commissioner, you own on, you've got an attaboy for that, for me. MIPs, we're on pro-credit right now. We are paving the gravel section of it. I expect to finish that next week. The weather holds out, and that's the end of my MIPs for this season. I will have Hill Road, first part of the season, many or something.
You can do, yeah.
Well, he asked me, I said, well, if the app can delay anyone, that's...
Yeah, Hill Road, my big clock will...
That's right. The Commissioner can put up with that for another year.
Can you buy me some good tires?
We listen to the citizens, not the Commissioners. I'm not gonna go there. Which will finish up our MIPs, and then we're gonna start a shoulder work, and I know some of you have had some questions about that. We're reconfiguring, we, as you know, bought a new 930 loader. We're reconfiguring it to do our shoulder work, and probably in the next two weeks, we'll start that. We can do that in rainy weather, so... The guardrail contract for King's Grave, roughly 800 feet is put in there. I've heard nothing but comments on King's Grave. Next year, we will have the complaints about speed and the increased traffic, so just to forewarn you.
That's what you get for being a nice guy.
There you go. Striping, we still have about 15% left to do. We do have a rumble strip contract going out on Crook Shank that should be done before the first of the year. George Fox is working on Stag Hollow. That's gonna be our MIP list for next year. Hopefully, you all approve paving that road, and they're doing the water design for us. Vegetation, we're meeting the 26th. They did have a presentation with about 200 people. They went over very well, so that committee's doing fine. They're gonna present at RIAC next Thursday, or this Thursday, this is, yeah. And George Fox is also going to present Stag Hollows there. I talked about Deer Creek Bridge. It did make the first putt on the Bridge Committee, so we're moving that thing along as we go, but like I said, it's gonna be three years before we get that done. We are, believe it or not, starting to work on our MIP for next year. It just seems like that's a continuous thing.
I like the county budget.
You did some paint up on the Lafayette Bridge. It seems to attract everybody with a can of paint, but, so, and there, my time, okay? Good, good job. Any questions?
Any other questions? Well, thank you for all the work, especially the, you know, the immediacy and the urgency of the bridges, and what you're up against, and also for the MIP, it was very ambitious and nicely done. So, thank you, and thank your crew, please.
Yeah, you know, there's one thing, Commissioner, if I can just have 30 more seconds, is that I would like to acknowledge my staff in my absence. They never missed a beat, and I think that Russ Roy and Catherine deserve an attaboy because they haven't missed a step. So, you know, they don't need me, that's kind of a hard thing to say, but that's, that's a good deal, is that if you were going to, if something was to happen to any of us, you've got backup out there.
Yeah, you've got a good crew, and it's, it's been difficult. They have borne up under a lot of extra work for each one of them, but appreciate it.
You know, if you don't have a good leader, that doesn't happen.
Oh, thank you. It's been, they've done excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, John, all the guests on your next procedure, and we are going to anticipate good results.
Oh, I think it's going to, it's almost positive.
Good. Need some help with your bridge there?
No, I just went to work.
Thank you, John. Take care of yourself.
Love on the ground.
Yeah. Well, calendar, that sort.
Thank you, John. Make sure to hook up something, I'll be far.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Take care.
Behave.
We'll, and now invite Ken Fridays to give us an update.
I'll chair right here, Ken.
I didn't realize it was your update.
No, it's, I'm sorry, it's two things. Sorry about that.
It's, the main thing I have is about Joe Strunk. He's made an application to be on the Planning Commission. I actually reached out to him because Harold Garrettson was our attorney, that was, our attorney-in-residence on the Planning Commission for a number of years, and he decided not to review this time. And Joe is a local attorney. He was with Tankersley and Rockington, has recently gone out on his own. So, I was just wanting to see if the, if the board is willing to, and I'd like to propose that you interview him for a possible appointment to the Planning Commission. I'd also sent over the packet for the Benedetti. I figured you knew about Benjamin Road pretty well, but I didn't know if you wanted to cite a visit on that, so...
I've done it.
Yeah.
Well, we're well on it.
And so, those are the only two things I really had.
The, well, Joe, and I like this, I like this application, I mean, on those, do we normally, I also, I mean, has that been advertised? I mean, I don't, that's, that's the thing, you know, do we do it without letting other people know?
Sometimes you do.
So, we've done it both ways? Appointing somebody, if we have really somebody that's qualified?
And I did tell Joe, you know, to me, it's a good word.
Sure, sure. Well, if you have any suggestions of somebody...
No, I don't. That's why I wanted to ask, I just wanna make sure, if we do this, like, if we employ people like that, I don't need you with this, I don't really have a problem with that.
See, if there's an opening, we'll put them on the website, but a lot of times, we'll hear about somebody, you know?
And with, you know, when you have a specific need, such as...
Yeah, and it's, it's not required that we have an attorney, but we have, so...
It's been historically been a bad one, and it's not a bad idea, but...
It's nice, yeah.
Somebody to blame.
Yes.
So, we just run that over to our Thursday then, or do we have to go through, I mean, put it on the consent agenda?
We don't have any other applicants, right?
I haven't checked lately. I don't know of any other applicants, but again, I didn't know...
Unless you wanna interview them.
Unless you wanna interview them, I didn't.
That has also been done.
Yeah.
Yeah, if he's the one for you, if we don't plan on advert, you know, if we don't plan on advertising, if Ken says, you know, I need, Ken's gone through, says we advertise, then I think we could end up interviewing more than what people...
Which isn't bad.
I mean, yeah, well, that's, that's why I asked that question.
Do you want to put it on our website that we have an opening, and then...
That's totally fine.
Or do you feel comfortable with the applicant?
I read the application. I, I'm comfortable with that.
I feel comfortable with the process, and if we've done it that way before, then I don't have an issue.
I do know that Ken has given quite an effort trying to find people that are attorneys that would be up to the task of being a chair, so it isn't without effort that he's found this individual. I don't think it'd be a bad idea for you to interview him, so you're comfortable with him, but that's up to your discretion.
And then if we're not, if we're not comfortable, then we can...
Open it up.
So, why don't we plan on maybe doing that 15 minutes before the next infominal?
In December.
In December, correct. If that, if we could do that, like at 1:00, it'll be 1:15?
Yeah, 'cause then we can always open it up afterwards.
That would be the first infominal in December, Ken. Do you think you could...
I will do my best to talk to them.
All right. Thank you for that, and we'll see you on Thursday.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ken. And thanks for sending that stuff electronically to me.
Oh, yeah. You bet.
Thank you, Ken. This time, do we have anything on the perimeter consent agenda that we're gonna put up? And do we have any questions about, because our sheriff is here, so do we have any, any questions that the sheriff can answer regarding contracts and grants?
I just thought, you know, looking at A&amp;E's, I thought, you know, when I looked through the pack, I thought everything was good. I just, I just really, I know they work, you know, and why they're just that much. I mean, it is a little bit cheaper. I mean, it's a whole, like, 45% cheaper, 40% cheaper, and I'm wondering what, it seems like either, the orbiter, he's been really low for some reason.
Sheriff, do you wanna...
Well, actually, this is facilities, Joe sent the same bid request to, it was the same exact letter to every, to the five vendors, and the bids...
And it could have something to do with him being locally, the other two are really busy, you know, so, I mean, I'm not opposed to his bidder accepting that at all, so...
And I guess the other thing I would highlight with this is, we are splitting the cost for this project with the courts.
And, right, 'cause it's, we're only paying eight, not almost $9,000 out of our costs, the county is in it.
Correct, correct, and this is to address some security concerns with the courthouse.
Good idea.
Okay, so, are we okay with those? And then we can move on to the non-consent agenda items. Either can either add these to the consent agenda or leave off. We're on a phone call, this is item D1. Commissioner Primisic and I were on a phone call on Friday regarding the one-time payment to AOC to make that road, that road fund whole again, and the consensus was that we were gonna move this forward to, to vote on it, so that there would be, you know, hopefully one-time payments, and we can, you know, do that, or we can do a flexible payment, but it looks like this one-time payment might make sense, correct?
Yeah, the options are spread it over 10 years, and pay interest on our portion, which is just under $25,000 is what Yamhill County's piece of that has been calculated to be. And I would prefer to do it as a one-time payment and not leave this hanging for some future board to have to deal with and wonder why they're making these annual payments of a smaller amount, but paying interest on it. And I, and for the sake of AOC, I think it's critical that we get this behind us and solidify the financial situation there. The board has done a tremendous job, and staff, I should say, staff and board, in restructuring and really weeding out and streamlining what they're doing there. I think, unfortunately, sometimes it takes something like this to get you to take a deep dive. And I think that AOC is gonna be much better because of this, but I would like to see us move forward, make that one-time payment.
Yeah, I think after I did a couple of the budget, the AOC budget meetings, and had a chance to talk to Rob, and Van Cleve, and Michael, and look at some of the new fiscal policies, I could feel pretty confident that the AOC's in a position that this will never happen again, the way we're structured, and so I would rather just pay the one-time, one time, and not stretch it, not stretch it out.
Yeah, especially since there's interest involved, and I think since, I think the majority of the counties at this point...
83% right now have chosen to, or have indicated that this is the direction they're going.
Yeah, so that's good. We can, we should.
And it's like, it's not like we didn't use some of those services anyway. I just...
And I'd like to get this behind us before the legislative session starts, because I want staff at AOC focused on being over there at the Capitol, that's the legislature that are doing what they usually do with us, so...
So, I'd recommend, I'm sure we just end that to those things, consent or...
Consent, okay. Next, we have discussion of the High Heaven Gate issue, and Commissioner Primisic, you wanted this brought forward for discussion and info today?
Yes, I, as you're aware, we have had a presentation, had a formal, by a citizen who has a concern about that gate. I've been asked, Ken has been really doing the deep dive on this, and I think it's very important that we are absolutely solid in our position, that legally, we've done everything that is required. I do know that we've got the documentation showing the transfer of that from LeLamet to Weyerhauser, and we passed that order last week to make that Weyerhauser's contract. If we do move ahead, and I, Ken has been talking to Weyerhauser, if we were to provide keys for individuals, I want that done through Weyerhauser, not through the county. We've had Weyerhauser is the one we've given authorization to put the gate there, so any authorization of use of that gate should come from Weyerhauser, in my opinion. And I don't know if that legally, if that's accurate, or, but that, that would be my wish. But I do think that a valid point is made in, given the location of a couple of homes on High Heaven, that... High Heaven that would be for a fire to break out below there, that would be the obvious escape route would be High Heaven. And so those are the things that I think need to be explored and finalized.
I thought, when I talked to Christian, my, my only question to Christian is to make sure, because I know there was no confusion, I remember, was by the person that we wanted to close it, is, is it still what it was gated at that same time? Did you probably know this, did we still maintain it, I mean, not maintain it, is it still classified as a county road or as a public road? There seems to be that if, if it's, if it's really still a county road or if it's a public road, because that can make a difference.
Well, they could, we have public roads, and it's still a county road.
Well, that's like.
It's still a county road. It doesn't change its designation.
Okay, so is it?
Because in reviewing the minutes from the public hearing, it, it was still designated as a county road. Didn't it's still a county road? They didn't change that.
And we talked last Thursday that we were going to change the conditions of the permit. Did we discuss we were going to change the conditions of it, then we would have a public hearing, and if we do what we're going to do now, we're, I understand we're not required to have a public hearing. If we just do, and Christian said there was some language we put in for you, subsequent, you know, the lease, he's a fashions seller.
If, if there's.
Sorry. What are you asking?
Well, we, we talked to our formal yesterday, or last week, after we approved the trans, the transfer, whether we should have a public hearing.
Correct. It depends on what kind of action you want to take.
Well, that's, that's, and that's why I talked to Christian. Christian said if we just leave the transfer the way it is, I mean, don't do anything, we're not required.
Right, correct. We've already done that.
And that's my classification with your request.
So what is it that you're, what, what is it that, that the board is interested in the next action or another action? Is there another action?
I just want to, I want to clarify where we are with High Heaven Road, and if we are going to pursue with Weyerhauser the idea of providing a key or two or three to private citizens for the purpose of using that as an escape route if necessary.
Yeah. Excuse me, Christian. According to my conversation with Christian this morning, we might need to have some further conversation about the key issue, because he believes that the way the current permit is worded now, the Weyerhauser can issue keys to public entities.
Right.
But not private citizens.
So that was listed in the order.
So if, if we want to put another condition on the permit, that Weyerhauser will issue keys to private citizens, that would be a change to the permit. So it would likely cause us to have, you have a public hearing.
So is this, is this something that we want to further discuss at another informal session when we've gotten that information?
Yeah, I think that's the next piece, is we need to direct Ken to have that conversation with Weyerhauser, see if there's any appetite on their end to do that. Now, we could then step back and decide that we were going to force that issue, but I really would prefer that we do it in a conversation with Weyerhauser and let them be in charge of that, since that is how this has moved forward up to this point in time. And I, I think Weyerhauser would possibly be open to that discussion without us having to make this into a major public process.
Ken, have we had that discussion at all with them?
Just really briefly, but not in those kinds of specifics.
So there was never any, it wasn't addressed to where they could give us an indication of where they were?
No, we briefly talked about keys, but not to the details like the commissioner was proposing, so I think that would be a follow-up conversation I'd have to have with Scott Marlega.
So maybe what we could do is, and my suggestion, I don't know how the board feels about this, is put this, get that information, and then come back at the next informal, I'm guessing probably beginning of December, as close to the beginning of December, as we can, with that information, have a further discussion about what we could, would like to do going forward, and then we'll know what our options are.
And if it became necessary to modify the agreement, that would then.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, it, it's again, that whole process.
Okay.
But if we can resolve this issue without going to that degree, I would prefer to do it then.
Sure.
No, I, this, I guess, a land use question from you. Have you ever seen any precedents or case law where a, that's been brought, where a, where a public entity, whether it's a municipality or a county or whatever, has a, like that what we did, you know, we gave, we gave a permit to Lamont, now they retract it, to Weyerhauser does, do we, the public agencies, they're going to challenge that, since it's a county road and we don't maintain it, it's not a maintained county road, that we can give a private entity the ability to issue keys on our behalf because it's not their road?
I don't know. I have not, it's not a land use question. I don't know the answer.
Yeah, because I'd be here as knowing the answer.
I know that we can gate public roads and county roads.
Right.
I know that with, if the statute allows that.
But can we give a private entity the ability to do the keys, to give out the keys?
I'm pretty sure you could probably condition it however you want in the public interest, but I don't want to confirm that.
That was part of the condition, the transfer.
And Christian's been handling this and not me, so I have not done any research on it.
Yeah, because if, if, if Commissioner Primzic has questions, if we answer them, and that, if we know that, then I agree for a change of condition that we should, early in December have a public hearing.
Well, I think before we get to that point.
Well, that's, we need to know first.
We need to have the information, have an informal work session on this, and then based on that, we'll ask to turn whether the one is necessary. So is that okay? So we go ahead, and what would that be, the fifth of December? Is the fifth, we can plan on discussing it again when we have all that information?
That should be probably the time.
Okay. And Christian will be able to?
Or the fourth.
Is it the fourth?
December fourth.
Okay. So if that's okay, then we'll go ahead and discuss it then, after you get.
And if there, and if that doesn't work, if there's other potential options, I talked to Christian, since it's a county, if it is a county road, he said we always could, not that we would, but we always could take action to vacate that road.
Correct. And that too would require.
And that, but that would require, so if we're going to have a public hearing, I'd like to be able to know what are our, we had that public hearing, what are the options?
And it's possible if we negotiate this and they're willing to issue keys.
Just the way it is.
Then it puts this thing to bed. If not, then we can get involved in the entire process and everything, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So, yes.
Yeah, thanks, Ken, for all the.
I don't know if anybody's heard from BLM yet or not, I've talked to them, and they're really concerned, that's a public road, it's, there's no question that it's not a public road and it goes to be a landland. The map that I gave last week, but I only had three minutes, so we didn't get to it, shows the darkened area, so that's not Weyerhauser land, it's a county road that was maintained for many years when we moved there, and I believe I have a picture of it.
So.
Being maintained.
Excuse me?
You can take testimony, but I think you should make a decision as to whether you're going to take testimony or not.
Okay, so, so may I just say, at this point, typically what we've been doing is our Tuesday work sessions are, since our time as commissioners is limited, when we are together, we have to notice each meeting, and so we typically, we typically have been limiting testimony until Thursdays when we have a formal session and people are, people know they can come and speak. And so I don't know if it's the will of the board, but I think we've, we've had about over 30 emails to staff, two, two presentations at formal sessions, and this particular session is, we're just trying to decide what our next game plan is, so I don't know that testimony is in the interest of those who are not here to make testimony, that in, in a formal session, that would be applicable, and also at a public hearing, they would be taking public testimony. However, if it's the will of the board to allow Mrs. Bryan to continue to discuss this, I'm going to read it up to, if I don't know that this is the time or the place to continue this discussion.
I think that if we're going to have a discussion on the ifs and ends of that property, which we have already given to Weyerhauser by the grid we have, that as we move forward, if we're going to have public testimony, they should be notified so that Weyerhauser is, has the ability to respond to that public testimony. So I don't think it'd be appropriate to be discussing that without the parties that are connected to it are all able to participate.
Well, that's part of my concern, knowing that if we elect, I have a public hearing, we're taking testimony now outside of the public hearing without giving any other citizen the chance to testify.
I'd rather not do that, that we, we might be able to resolve this without getting to that point. If we can't, then I think.
And then the comments, I don't mind listening to the comments at all. If, if we elect, we're not going, we're going to satisfy, we're not going to have a public hearing, then the comments, I don't mind listening to comments, but if we're going, if this potentially could have a public hearing, I don't want to take testimony outside of the public.
That would probably not be.
That would be my, that would be my.
Okay, good point.
Also. So I just, in the December fourth, you will have had those conversations with Weyerhauser, then we can figure out.
If we're going to have a public hearing or what's next.
Okay, so Mrs. Bryan, at this point, I think testimony would not be appropriate, and we're going to go ahead and come back with staff's information and further discuss that next informal that we have the schedule for, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, since you do have a public hearing, you, your neighbors, everybody.
Everybody will be.
Can I speak for three minutes every Thursday at the formal sessions?
You can, you can.
Okay, I'll do that.
You can come any Thursday.
That'll be good. That'll be like 12 more minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
We're charging for access.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
So at this point, we'll move on to item D3, which is on the non-consent agenda, and that is basically, you know, for a number of years, you have heard, you talk about that child welfare system, as you know, at the state level, meaning the Secretary of State's audit has shown that it's, it's, it's not running optimally, there are children and our providers.
You say that very nicely.
I'm trying really hard to say that it's, it's a broken system.
And you're doing, you're doing a good job.
Producing broken children and very frustrated providers, and I think it's, it's, it's a crime what's happening to these kids. Fortunately, we have an option to cure that to some degree, to mitigate some of the damage, and we have been working for a long time on what I've always hoped to see, and that's a more local involvement and a, and a local option for us to do a hybrid of county services, local accountability, more transparency, kind of like the CCOs are run, they use Oregon Health Authority money, and then they administer through the CCO locally. So we have a contract with, and it's a, it's a consultation contract with three women who are very conversant with the system, who are going to put together the blueprint on how to be, call DHS out, provide our foster parents with real advocacy, a parent navigator, we have supports for kids before they get into foster care, but once they're in there, we're going to play hardball with these kids' lives in terms of keeping them safe and protected, and it's not happening now at the state. So what this contract does, it's local oversight, local accountability, DHS for child welfare functions, we have an independent, an independent approach to doing child welfare, and these women are going to be providing that blueprint. So that's what this contract is, and.
Ma'am Chair, I, I haven't, because I was looking at the packet electronically, that wasn't in our packet electronically, but.
That's why we put it on for your discussion today, because Commissioner Stera, well, you'll all be out next week, and then Commissioner Stera is out the week of Thanksgiving, and we believe that Christian and Silas will finish up the contract end of today, tomorrow morning, and she really wants to be in town for the approval of the contract.
Well, yeah, I, I, you know, I admire, you know, you're, do this, one thing that I would really ask is, as far as if we do that locally, partner with somebody, you know, could do that locally, locally, what is action, how much is reimbursed by the state? How much are, is the county's cost, what it's going to cost of taxpayers?
That's not what this is. This is a contract, a consultation contract to come up with an action plan on how.
Okay, do we, I know what that consultation contract's going to cost?
Yeah, it's $30,000.
Okay, that's, because I, since I did, honestly, I did look at the folder, because I'm not so used to looking at the electronic.
It's not in the folder.
It's not in the folder, so I'll tell you what.
Commissioner Stera is covering for you.
Yeah, what the contract does is it's, it's an entity, three women who've been working in child welfare are going to be putting forth the blueprint for how we would actually carry that out. It's, it starts 11:15 and it goes to June, and there will be milestones along the way, and we're basically paying them for the plan. And then we also have a bill that's going to be introduced so that other states could do this, but we'll be able to go to DHS and go, we're not just coming complaining, we're saying this is how we're going to do it. So you'll be able to read the contract that shows what we're asking these women to do.
Yeah, I don't, I, I say I admire you for doing that, because I think the program, I think the foster child program is totally broken, too, when you see kids being put up in hotels by themselves, and, and good foster parents who are having kids taken away from them, even though they may be great foster parents who've been foster parents for 20, 25 years, you know, so. But if this is the contract to just tell us how we would move forward, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Then I, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, we're not anywhere near, because what happens once we get the roadmap, so to speak, we go to DHS and we work out, how are we going to facilitate this?
And that $30,000, is it budget, I mean, we have the money in, is it coming out of DHS?
It's DHS, and they have, they have the money for that.
Okay.
And so anyway, I want to thank all the partners in the community that really have wanted this as well. Silas has worked hard, his team, and, and I'm just grateful that we're actually going to get this done. This is a big deal.
And a state needed a program.
Yeah, and it can be really a model that can be grounded around the state. All the counties are looking for help. This is a.
Yeah, was the annual county issue, that'd be one thing, but it's not a annual county issue, it's a whole state issue.
It is a statewide issue, but nobody else is tackling it, and so we might as well take the lead on it. Mary has invested a tremendous amount of time and energy.
Yeah, which is very appreciated.
I'd love to see us show the way, if you will.
Yeah, I'm excited about it, I really am. So, okay, so there's that, so if that's okay, we can put that, just the consideration of the approval of the contract, we don't have the actual, Christian's got to, you know, tweak some of that.
The concept is approved.
So we have it on the non-consent, since we'll be sending out the contract for you to look at, hopefully by the end of today.
Right. The only thing that we're still playing with is the, the providers or the entities, the consultants, insurance coverage, we want to make sure that they're, they've got.
So since we won't see a contract today, this means, all right, I would probably leave it, don't add consent, because we haven't got it.
No, that's what I said.
Yeah, just leave it and then we'll consider it, we'll consider Thursday.
Yeah, and so we'll talk about Thursday.
No consent.
So you'll get to, so we'll keep that on the, on non-consent. Okay, we don't have an executive session, but we do have Commissioner updates, and Commissioner Olson, I'll start with you.
Uh, I, this afternoon, I went over to an economy and, the public, economy and public meeting in Salem, supposedly 11 o'clock, went to about 1:00, was there about 15 minutes and realized it was, and say, I mean, the information was good, but it was no more than basically a marketing show, you know, I mean, it was their economist, it wasn't supposed to be their, this company that put it on, it wasn't supposed to be their economist, it was their economist, so it's like, well, nah, you got better things to do like that, and they, I think they probably would have twelve people sign up to begin with, so.
Who put it on?
Company called Remy, R-E-M-I, and.
Yeah, that's all they do is market.
Yeah, it was a marketing, and I had no, but I know their name well, I know their name well.
You don't know.
So that was, and I'm going to be meeting with, probably hopefully next week or so with Laura and Ken to talk about a downtown, potentially using Cary for downtown grant. Laura can have the information regarding the downtown revitalization of Sheridan. There's a lot of money out there from the downtown associate, down, Morgan Main Street Association, and some other, other funds to help them restore some of their downtown buildings, and basically new streetlights to, you know, make their downtown more fancy. First thing I thought about was where the coffee shop was located, that's one of the buildings that is on that list, and I mean, but, you know, new facade, facade upgrades, they want like the old Masonic building down there, they basically has the old window transoms and the old humming sound. What they did is they just tore it down and put sheet metal siding over the whole building, but the bricks underneath, the transoms are underneath, so a lot of them, there's interior external, so, I mean, if Ken and Laura discuss if Cary has time to work on that potential grant to help our partner, help one of our partners out, so, that's all I have.
Commissioner? We've got, just wanted to bring your attention to. We've got, just wanted to bring your attention to Saturday, the Veterans Day Parade, the second time Angel's done a heck of a job putting this together. And I was all set to go and then I'm narrating the concert on Sunday at the Community Center, which everybody wants to participate, it's going to be really great. But the dress rehearsal is ten to twelve on Saturday and so I will be in the parade, I'll be doing that, but really encourage everybody to get out to the parade and then to be at the concert Sunday afternoon because it's going to be.
Both great events.
I was at the rehearsal last night and that Second Wind Band just really, we, we have a real gem there. Those people donate so much time and energy to this community. I just really want to see us get out.
Yeah, last year on the Fourth of July, not this year, last year on the Fourth of July, I had an opportunity to listen to them when we were in Dayton. And I've heard the Second Wind Band several times, they're really good.
Yeah, the Fourth of July, they, they start in Lafayette and then they go to Dayton. Anyway.
And the parade this year, supposed, Angel said when I talked to him, for last Thursday, it's going to be about twice as big as last year's parade.
He's getting lots of reaction. Anyway.
Hopefully it won't rain as hard as it did last year.
It's not going to rain at all, it's going to be.
It's going to be gorgeous, just absolutely gorgeous.
Of course, he's going to be inside at dress rehearsal.
And, and rally at Oregon Mutual in the, in the parking lot there, if we could. We also don't want anyone to forget that we're having our emergency, county emergency preparations there at the Community Center from nine until two on Saturday. So please try and go because I think we need to remind each other, the cavalry is not going to show up. When there's a disaster, we're going to be on our own, we need to prepare for, and our families too.
And we're doing a walkabout at the fairground Saturday morning, starting at nine o'clock. So I'll be there for at least an hour, but going over things that we currently are doing and the fair board will be doing a walkabout so that we can get everybody on the same page with activities out there. So that will be going on Saturday morning also.
Busy day. So I just want to tell you real quick what's going on. I, as you know, been trying to work on this youth outreach to bring a drop-in center here. Met with Jeff Claybaugh, who is the pastor at First Christian, First Christian Church with ten point two acres, seems to be, might actually be positioned to be the answer to a lot of our problems, not only in the ability to build housing there, transitional housing, but also a youth drop-in center. We did go visit Youth Outreach and Kate Stokes from Youth Outreach is now actually working with Jeff to see what we can do here locally. Problem, as you know, the campus center is def armed, but First Christian Church is now also positioned to pretty much pick up where Howard Parkham, unfortunately, had to leave off. And that is, he's got the Ben Co up, there's a breakfast there, but people were showing up, one of them with six kids living in her car and Jeff, Pastor Jeff, didn't have a clue as to, we're the director. So I did print off some resources in the county, we're going to be looking for a more comprehensive list so he can say, hey, go here, go here, these are some of the resources.
Is that the same list you gave me a while back, about four or five months ago, that has everything, it's like say eight pages?
No, this one, this one has just a lot of.
Oh, no, that's the one I have.
Is this the one you have?
Yeah, that's the one I have.
Okay.
I made a bunch of copies, I give it to quite a few people myself.
Yeah, anyway, I think it's like thirty pages or so. But, and the other thing is, is at the McFinnville Housing for Homeless Sub Committee, we did talk a little bit about how this church can also, is also probably going to be stepping up to have a vehicular camping program there. So there's that. Also, Anvil Academy has their five oh one C three status now and they're going to be doing a lot of hands-on training for kids to the school system. I've got my first foster kid going there this afternoon and he's going to be meeting with the gentleman that we hooked in there who'll be teaching classes. And what else? Lot of good stuff going on and I want to say that Jeff Claybaugh has, has really shown that he's taken church from a building to actually a game changer for social services in this community. So we're very excited about that. So all good stuff. Anyway, thank you all. If there's nothing else, for the good of the order, we can go ahead and return today. It's two twenty-five.